...and to a republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. How are we looking, John? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 3, 2014 meeting of the Patrick Building's Attorney Board Appeals. The first application will be an adjourned application of fourteen dash twenty, Boco's Toys, Tim Laredo, nine eleven Railroad Avenue. Sees permission to renew a special permit for nightclub cabaret used for summer to four thirty-five twenty-one A one. Subject premise is located in the D three business dome. Members of the board, members of the public, I am recused on this application. I believe Mr. Homefellow will be chairing it.
Could your premise have been in two hundred feet?
Uh, but I have interest in a property within two hundred feet of the applicant. No? Just for the current, please?
Well, just, well, just want you to recall it.
I don't recall?
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, we'll recall it after a couple of applications. Interesting. Okay. Next application will be a new application out of fourteen dash twenty-five. Heather Giorgio of Three Halls Courts, sees permission to construct a new thirty foot by fourteen point eight three. One-story addition required, living before thirty-five fifteen G. Fifteen feet side yard setbacks required, twelve provided, subject premises in the A vet next result. And Miss Giorgio were representative there up here? Oh, great. Anything? Great. Please state your name and address for the record.
Alex Balmenti, Valenciano Architects, thirty-one West Main Street, Platoon, Texas. And Mike Musina, one of our associates.
Wonderful, welcome.
Welcome, thank you. So, Miss Giorgio is looking to expand her house. We have a new site plan. She has, uh, the original application was looking to expand to the west. Approximately fourteen point eight feet to the west, which limits the side yard there to twelve feet as opposed to fifteen feet. So, we're looking for a relaxation of three feet on that one-story addition. Additionally, she'd like to put to the east a two-story addition. And we are asking for a four-foot relaxation on the front yard from thirty feet to twenty-six feet. The new front addition will line with the existing porch, uh, which is presently, uh, twenty-sixty plus or minus. Approximately the same dimension from the street. We are fine with everything else. The acreage is point five nine acres. Our FAR for the houses, uh, and the addition to eight point seven percent. And then with the decks and the garage, approximately thirteen percent. So, we're still under the twenty-five percent, uh, FAR.
All right. So, on the westerly side of this piece, we're gonna bump out fourteen point eight feet and eleven point nine feet?
Uh, correct. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna bump out fourteen point eight.
Fourteen point eight, okay.
On both sides. And the, because of the truncated property line, we're thirteen point two feet from the property line on the south and twelve feet on the north. So, a three-foot relaxation will be four.
On the westerly side?
On the westerly side, correct. And eleven point nine is the little spring shed that's being removed.
Yeah, I got that.
Yeah.
We got the one end, is that?
Wasn't advertising that, all right. Yeah. You know, we're putting in an additional, how many, how many square feet?
Uh, in seventeen point seven by thirty-six, so now about five hundred and two feet.
Wow. And you're asking for front yard setback relief, how much?
Four feet. So, from thirty to twenty-six point, uh, three one at the highest point.
And where's the difficulty, uh, in putting that eastward addition in line with the house?
Uh, it's, when we lay out the interior of the building, uh, it's just not, it's not as convenient. It doesn't work as well with the driveway on the west side. Also, we think technically it looks nicer to have that piece aligned before it should be this direction.
They have it on the bump out?
Yeah, there's an eight foot point seventeen foot enclosed porch existing on the front of the house.
Gotcha. Now, this, this driveway actually comes off of a, another street, if you will, that being Wiggins Avenue.
That's correct. The address that is three halls.
Right. But it's a fairly large piece that, um... Remember, there are questions from members of the board?
Only, I think, the only issue though, um...
I think there are people that require somebody that came in.
Yeah.
I just feel like...
Sure, yeah. Uh, when, can you get that, when can you get it in?
January, September.
January.
January.
Yeah, to be published, of course, I'll be back to change.
Exactly. If we were to just focus on the, the west addition, the original application that you have, and then put this in as a subsequent for the east and ream, reamcase, we'll do that so that we can act with her under construction on the west east. We're fine.
May have to make another application.
Yeah, which is fine, which is fine. In time wise, we sort of like to get the west east going, you know.
All right, so you're not, you're not amending this application?
If that's, yeah, that's what's being...
And I think it might be...
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. You said to go through it all again, new mailings, put it again to the, the side.
Right.
Okay, with that being said, members of the board, do you have any questions on how it is advertised and what you force down? So, may I take a place to be sure it's time?
Just, just to be clear, with four plans that we're looking at, everything that we're looking at in this package represents the original application?
That's correct, yes.
So, this, this will be...
That's consistent.
And you're asking for the relief because you say it doesn't match up with the back driveway and the fact of the way the house lays out?
Well, that's in the subs, the, the later application. The present application, we're only now asking for a three-foot relaxation on the west side.
On the west side, I got you, okay, so we're on the west side, very good. And the reason that that can't be?
The dimension of that room at fourteen feet is so narrow, we really need the extra three feet. Eleven feet is just not using space. Yeah.
Okay. What were you talking about that about that? I understand what you're saying now, okay, that makes sense. Very good. Okay, gentlemen, excuse me one second. Any member of the public who would like to speak for or against this application? Have you seen anybody? No? Anyone who would like to speak for or against? Oh, you can also come right back up, yeah, I'm public, how's that? Do you have anything additional to add, gentlemen?
No.
No, that's it, well, it's great. Thinking of motion, please. Mr. Currents?
I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we, uh, close the application adjourned to our decision.
Motion, Mr. Currents, to close the application. Second to by, Mr. Stein, all in favor? Aye, and opposed? Thank you very much. The next application will be out of fourteen dash twenty-six. Always a foul one, due to the senior authority, since we're just expanding. A walk-in health care, two-hill-like basement for example. An overflow for patients, requirement living before thirty-five thirty-one A six. Nineteen spaces required, eleven provided, subject premises in the B vet next result.
Hello, Tony.
Well, thank you, sir, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, always, one five two, York Road, Seattle.
Great. And Mr. Bob, do you have your certificates of mailing?
I do, yes.
Great, you can just put it right on the counter. Okay, please explain your application to the board and why you need basement.
Sure, uh, so currently, we have a medical office there. As far as I know, it's been a medical office since the seventies. And we've been there for the last few years and essentially, um...
Are you already operating as a medical facility right now?
Yeah, that's correct, actually, in just an office. So, it's been, we're seeing patients and we're basically doing what we want to do anyway currently, uh, for the last few years. Some patients and, you know, community members. And, and essentially, when we extend, uh, our bases, we have more admin space, uh, uh, some overflow space. We're working on another provider, um, that essentially it moves.
Okay, and by so doing, that's what happened, bumped up the parking spaces required, and that's why you divorce now.
Exactly.
You've been operating out of there for two years, correct?
Just over two years now, too.
Two years. Next door to you is Dr. Switting's office.
That's right.
Now, I don't know if Dr. Switting owns that building, doesn't own that building, I have no idea.
At least he owns it.
But I know in practicality, I can see where somebody would park on his side to go to your, if you had it open for him.
Sure, I, so I mean, yeah.
So, my question is, have you ever spoken to Dr. Switting about perhaps leasing a few spaces? Anything that would mitigate the relief that's being required?
Uh, we speak to him on and off, he's our neighbor, so we pass, uh, working the same hospital. He knows of our intentions and kind of what we're doing. I mean, currently, that, I mean, now sometimes we have patients parking each other's parking spots. So, yeah, I mean, when we were there initially, we, we essentially had no patients and we had a lot. So, could they be parked there because it's vacant before that, it wasn't a problem there, so, rather than...
So, it seems that you have a good relationship with your neighbors to the south and that the parking has not to date become an issue. Is that true?
That's correct.
Do you anticipate with you using the basement for administration, would you be using more of the space above to see patients? And would that increase the number of people coming to your walk-in?
Ideally, we would like to see it grow, but even now, we're not really utilizing all of our spaces currently. It's a transient population. So, you have patients coming in, so that's a problem in and of itself. So, once they come in, they see the doctor, they leave. And the latest we're open is, uh, Thursdays or Fridays till six, seven P M.
The average stay of your patient is about what? Out of time wise?
Out of time wise, uh, coming from door to door, from parking to parking. Twenty minutes ideally, ideally.
So, it's not something where they're there for hours on end?
No, absolutely not.
Any questions from members of the board?
Oh, who was there?
That was Trudinsky and then after, Jake, was someone that was up there? No, it was Jake, Jake was there and then it became a vascular place after that.
It was actually...
Yeah, but there was a vascular surgeon in that voice. Oh, Jacoby.
Jacoby, was it Jacoby?
Yeah, Mel Jacoby, yeah, there was Jacoby, obviously Jake, it was, uh... It was Dr. Jacoby was there, what's his first? What was his first name? He was the guy who said, "I got a cold," and he says, "Take off your clothes." I already remember how it was. I don't know how the hell he did it. That was the way he diagnosed things, I guess, I don't know.
Englishman.
Yes, Dr. Jacoby, wow.
He was in, uh... Is he at Omaha Beach?
I can believe something, I, but then they don't know. But, yeah, if you are correct, there are members of the board who recognize that that has been a medical facility quite a long time.
That is why we're talking about this, so continuity.
Yeah, definitely had that going for you. The concern now is that, uh, we have been reluctant to use basements in the village to patch up. And some of our buildings, if not a lot of our buildings. But in your particular case, you want to use it for administration purposes.
Will you set exams to?
I mean, ideally, you know, it's in this small medical office, small rooms are like multifunctional rooms, you know? So, we kind of have a small table, we have workspace in the back. Even now, it's essentially five exam rooms and two exam rooms, probably we see a patient to date currently. So, we set certain as like a storage and admin space currently, but with a new provider and ideally they can use.
Now, we are doing the parking spaces here. We were expecting any appropriate board in the village or the building inspector would have to say what size of the rooms are and how they utilize. Is there, is there a way to get people out, if there was a problem?
Right.
Yeah, okay, but that's not heard with this board.
Exactly.
This is, tonight was before us, you know, parking spaces. The relief requested isn't really grand, but it would be nice if you could mitigate some of it with your neighbors. You know, if, if there's a way that, you know, if the way that the cars filling out off the road or they could be parked, you know, between you and Dr. Switting, that would be a wonderful thing, so, should this board grant relief?
Mr. Chairman, it might be something as simple as a cross-use agreement. You know, he allows you to use overflow, he uses your overflow. You know, something simple, just doesn't have to be a, like, oh, we need a one-year lease. You know what I mean?
Sure.
Just a gentleman's almost agreement in paper.
Mr. Stein?
Um, just to clarify, the reason that you want to, you, you, the reason you want to do this expansion is because you're bringing in another provider?
That's right, so...
So, you do expect the usage to really go up with all, you do, essentially, hoping that's...
Uh, essentially similar to general medicine, general medicine, uh, primary care.
Okay, it's not something we're bringing, bringing in in order to type of machinery or anything else?
No, nothing like that.
All right, okay, you got that, answer, okay. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak for or against this application? I'm not a public, I guess. Do you have anything else to add, sir?
Uh, no, no, I'm ready.
Great, take a motion on the application. Mr. Sum?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, close this application and pick someone with a decision.
Motion, Mr. Sum, to close the application, second to by, Mr. Shalas, all in favor? Aye, and opposed?
So opposed.
That did. Thank you very much, sir.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Appreciate your time, thank you, great. Okay, we're gonna try it again. The next application is fourteen dash twenty, Boco's Toys, Tim Laredo, nine eleven Railroad Avenue. Sees permission to renew a special permit, nightclub cabaret, used for summer to four thirty-five twenty-one A one. Subject premise is located in the D three business dome. I would say again on the record, members of the board, members of the public, I am recused from this application in that, in that I have interest in these private facilities, wanted to complete the applicant. Mr. George Homefellow will be chairing this application. Now, George?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
The last meeting that we had, we had, uh, requested some information on the actual lineage of the corporations. Under clear us, the way it's all holding out. Will you able to pull that together first?
Yes, similar to the town.
And also, we were talking about, um, how you were working with, um, the precinct when you have large events and your security plan and what you're...
Could you, please, speak up a little?
At the last meeting, we also spoke about your security plan. When you have large events, how do you work with the fifth precinct and whatnot? Were you able to put something together on that also?
As far as?
What your plan is, what security plan is, your procedure?
That's, that was done three years ago, an opening with the captain Burgle, and that's, was submitted to him. They have, they have their own internal copy of what security they want to do, but they won't release any of that information to the public.
You don't have any of that in file, Charlie?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the mayor's office is in, is involved in every security meeting. And we have them periodically, subsequent, uh, prior to events and then subsequent to events to talk about what changes need to be made. It's a very common occurrence, um, that can be verified with the mayor's office and code enforcement. So, it's, it's, it happens periodically throughout the year. In fact, you just, you just have a meeting with the mayor every...
Well, we'll look at it, we'll look at it, yeah. Is there any member of the board? What about, so, so there is, and so the village knows what your plan is, is that your contention?
As far as security, sir?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the, the village is an integral part of, uh, any, any security, uh, planning that has to do with the police department. Happens here, actually, and primarily in, in the village hall somewhere, in the mayor's office. Members of the fifth precinct come down, members of code enforcement, the mayor himself, uh, depending on the type of event, the size of that. So, it's, it's standard practice and procedure for, for our operators, Tim primarily, to notify the police department and the mayor's office when we feel there's, there needs to be a change in the security plan. Or they'll call us, they'll say, "Hey, we heard about this event, uh, why don't you come down? Let's, let's review, um, what we're gonna do." And our security company is a private firm, um, they're very professional, they're, they're there too, they're represented at the, at the meeting. We don't have our own, we have our own security, but primarily, most of the people are private contractors.
So, so the board, in effect, could get information from, uh, other boards then as to what they're aware of?
It's certainly the board, but we should speak to code enforcement.
Code enforcement, all right, just so we can clarify exactly.
Well, absolutely, they, they, very common occurrence.
Mr. Chairman, a question, um, so I, I'm, I'm hearing two things here. Are you using a private company, are you using private separate company, are you ironing within? Is it, what's the name of the company you're using?
We use both, is it Alpha One? It's Alpha One, um, Investigative Security. They're our in-house private contractor. And we employ two, I believe, two in-house security guards.
And everybody's fully licensed?
Everybody's fully licensed, yes, uh, licensed, bonded, insured, yes, that's what, we're very familiar with these insurance.
And just a follow-up question, uh, when's the last time you had a meeting with the mayor here from the...
When was the security?
I met with Sergeant, uh, I think his first name was Mike Hella, I know his last name was Hella. I'm not sure if it's Rob or Mike. And I met with him and the mayor and Peter Sarage and, uh, I just don't have the, uh...
It's okay, when was it? And in regards to what?
It was about less than sixty days ago, I don't know the exact date. And it was in regards to two events that were coming up.
Fair enough, I just wanted to establish for the record that you are actually meeting and you have met.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Because we're starting a year of incidents occurring there. Relatively recently.
Can you be more specific?
Yeah, when was? Two weeks ago, or... I have to say, I'm ready.
Wednesday before Thanksgiving?
Yeah, one from November second, one from Thursday fourth. I don't think I have them all in here. October twentieth, overdose poisoning, ingestion, overdose poisoning. The twelfth, uh, the second of November, overdose poisoning, ingestion, nine railroad avenue, the time and...
Is it same whether they took place within the premises or...
Location, nine railroad avenue, at the according. These are just, I don't remember.
All right. I just, out of fairness, we should give them a copy of that, so, perhaps, um... And we could put a clarification as to meetings within the village and, uh, and the applicants representatives about security.
We, we could, I can also point out, um, and I'm familiar with this as an attorney, we haven't ever been cited for having a disorderly premise. And that's when, I mean, incidents happen. And that's what the police are there for, um, we often talk about that at the meetings. They, they, you know, we, we call them when we feel there's a necessity for them to come out and they appreciate that, um, that rapport that we, that we maintain. However, as far as what's going on inside, um, we seem to have a handle on it. And that, you know, two years in operation and not having any disorderly premise tickets, we have no Mars on our licenses whatsoever, I'm not saying that these things didn't happen. And other things that I need to point out is the village is growing significantly. There are so many more places that are open in our general vicinity. And so, the traffic that goes by up and down Railroad Avenue to access the other places and also through the parking lot. The parking lot to our east, um, is, there's an exit from the, the new meatball place. And they, they have live music and dancing very, very often at the same time. So, you know, you're talking about nights that are very popular, the night before Thanksgiving, any given Friday or Saturday nights, you have an influx of people in that channel area. So, line Railroad Avenue may be where they make an arrest or the ambulance picks somebody up, not necessarily happening in the place. I'm just saying. You can't, you know, if we were having problems, it would be a matter of record and we, we would, we would be having problems with the state liquor authority. So, we do maintain order and security very well, uh, within our four walls. And we do it outside also, we have patrols and, uh, again, that can be verified with the mayor's office very easily.
All right, I think we're, we're gonna perhaps have to look into it internally to see, to what those results are. In the meantime, we can make copies of those incidents that you mentioned, just to give to them, so...
Yeah.
Uh, totally fair. I checked your website today, you have a really active schedule of events, uh, tonight, was it Big and Rich?
Yeah.
And that's a fairly prominent, uh, country act.
Country folks in general, and not as proud.
Yes.
They don't, they don't go as far as...
Maybe would that, you made yourself a country folk.
Well...
No.
Wish we could.
Yeah. It looks like you have a lot of events coming up this month, so, um...
There's, uh, there was, one more day, there's an additional question. I think one of the other issues basically though is you're also here with a special license. I think this board would appreciate it if you came in a timely manner to renew the, the license.
And, and I, I agree, I agree with you wholeheartedly. We, we screwed up, we didn't make that application in time. I guess, you know, growing pains of a new business and the paperwork got lost in the shuffle. Won't happen again, but certainly, um, I'll make sure I take care of that out of my office, but...
And the follow-up issue and question with that is, you know, initially, you had a bowling plane as part of these conditions.
That's right.
And it turned, changed over to a V I P, I'm not sure what it is now, and it doesn't matter to me, it really doesn't. It just, it's kind of a communication advisory, like a special permit, that you're changing your, your premise a little bit. And I, I, I mean, in a lot of ways, you guys have made a lot of positive changes, I, you know, and I think, you know, moving whichever way, obviously, success is difficult to maintain in the industry that you're in. And, uh, I, I, but I, I think the communication process needs to be, especially with this board, you know, we're reasonable people, we understand.
You're absolutely right, sir.
Can somebody explain that a little bit better to me, the, the special permit, um, the definition to this?
Special permit is a use which is not allowable as a right in any place in that zoning district. However, uh, it can be appropriate for a particular location if certain standards are, uh, are satisfied. And those standards, we have the general, uh, special permit standards that are found in many zoning codes. For example, the fact on crowding, um, uh, other, you know, behavior, whether that has an implication for other properties in the neighborhood, how your use fits in with the other uses which are allowable right in that area, whether they're commercially used in that. There's a, there's a whole laundry list of things. I believe your attorney has either addressed them or, uh, it's, they might be implicit in the presentation which you've made.
Clearly addressed when they first made the application, were granted the special permit.
So, just to clarify, is there a permit for nightclub cabaret? Because it was said to me in the last meeting that this was a nightclub cabaret, special permit cabaret, is that correct?
We only, how was it?
I thought it was advertised in my...
Advertised. And, uh, I think we had given that, I'm trying to remember our decision from the last time, I think we gave that. Yeah.
It was a variety of uses that you were actually going for.
You gave you that combination of uses and, I don't know, was there a change from what we had produced?
It was, because I think they also had Ollie Alley, there was some other uses which they eliminated now.
Which they eliminated?
Changed. Now, I think they're just really basically doing the nightclub cabaret. I think there's some dining area, but some of the changes.
We made it, we took all uses away rather than add them, so I guess that's where the, you know, we should have, not to say we shouldn't have come to the board and asked for permission, but when they eliminated one and made just space.
It could have been simply an amendment, doesn't necessarily, you know what I mean?
I actually have, uh, just the board, one of the... I actually have, uh, just for the board, just, one of the, I don't believe, I don't know if it's an issue tonight, but one of the things that was mentioned was, was noise and sound.
Yes.
And the board had mentioned they were going to look into their own records to see if there were any complaints, and we, we couldn't come up with any, but I, we do have a study that we did.
Okay, that's great.
Just from the last meeting, you guys, industry, the, the company. Um, and the fact is, at that, as close as the apartment building, the noise level is within the, the legal range where, you know, we would be getting summons every day. Uh, it's no more than normal voices speaking, probably even less than my voice, because I can tell they talk to us, so. But, you know, that's, that's the way the place is designed.
But you're a lawyer, you tend to speak by.
So, I don't need a mic at all.
Um, I don't know if this is exactly relevant to, you know, or appropriate, but, you know, in terms of your security plan, I, I'd like to bring to your attention that just yesterday, a coworker of mine, not a resident of Patchogue, came to me, gee, Mike, I went to the aquarium last week for a country act that was there, and the security inside the place was virtually nonexistent. And I almost got into two different fights, because people were blocking the stairway off of the dance floor, and there was nobody to prevent that, and there was no way to get out of there except through that one stairway, and, you know, and I almost got in two different fights, because the security just wasn't there to control the situation. So, you should consider that what you are doing may need to be looked at a little closer.
Mm-hmm. And, and we will, and I'll take, in fact, take into consideration what you just said, and we'll, we'll take a look at that, what show it was. Sometimes, we, we're not sure what the turnout's gonna be, so you, you hire a security guard in proportion to what you think the turnout is.
The rule of thumb in the business is one, one security guard per hundred people. Um, so if you did a show tonight and you had eleven hundred people there, you should have eleven, uh, excuse me, eleven security guards. Based on that, you're not, you're not able to do that in our facility, you actually have to go a lot higher, just because of the, of the vast space that you're, and, and exits that we need to control. So, on any given day, well, I'll submit to, um, Cal, I'll submit, um, my invoices actually, from the, the past thirty events that I've had been open, and you'll see that the minimum that I ever keep on is about sixteen. Uh, it ranges up to a normal night being twenty-five to twenty-six, which rivals a football team. So, the security, um, detail that we've had, it's never been brought up, um, the police department has always felt that we've always overdone it as far as security, and since I've opened, I've always overdone it with a lot more security officers even in the street in front of the building. I will assume that that though, Cal.
We just like to say for the record, there are three staircases for that, uh, something, dance floor.
I would like to say it's four, because the one staircase that he's talking about is, there's a pole in the middle that is up and down. So, there's four stairways to that.
All right, maybe, I don't know, maybe, can the village, just so everybody understands that there's one else? Maybe, uh, they can meet with them, just so we can get something clarified as to what we're looking for, what they're looking for, so we're on the same page, so we don't run into any incidents, like, still the ones that have been complained about. Just getting back to the uses, you're, you're using the property for what, nightclub slash cabaret, and what else?
We, we have, we have extensive catering business that's growing, uh, by the day. So, we do a lot of sweet sixteen parties, a lot of bar mitzvahs, um, occasionally a wedding, it's not the greatest place for a wedding, but, uh, we're getting very popular for those type of events, and parties, private parties, uh, Christmas parties, we just had one last night. I had one for my, my National Guard unit, we, we do, we do a lot of this, so, um, and that's a part of the business that we're looking to really develop and grow, because it's a, it's steady and it's not as volatile as maybe. We don't consider ourselves a nightclub, it's an event center and catering facility with, with one night, actually, where you would have a nightclub. There's always performers, there's always live bands there, and there's scheduled events, like tonight, uh, Big and Rich. And, and we do co-op marketing with the local radio stations, which is another event, uh, that we have tonight, and the radio station, uh, events do very well. Very popular, and, and you get a, you get a, you get a decent crowd, so.
And we do, we do serve food. The only difference from my presence here than three years ago in the street in front was the, the bowling machines. The restaurant's still open, we still do catering, we still do national acts concerts, we have that one nightclub night on Saturday, we still do local games on Friday, which is a charity and over, uh, event. So, everything is, remains the same, although one element is those bowling machines have changed.
All right, so it's nightclub, cabaret, catering, and restaurant, is that cat, a capture of what?
Well, if you want to say, I don't know if a night center is a.
Not a use, but is that the?
Well, like a theater, like a, you, you have a stage and.
And the reason why that, that we purchased a company that I stated last time I was here, was that it was for the last, I think, twelve to thirteen years, as far as the New York State Liquor Authority was concerned, that it was con- concerned. It was zoned, uh, as a liquor license for nightclub, cabaret, and cater. So, that was one of the things that it was easier for me to transfer, that's why you have Foco Toys and not South Shore Food. Which was the existing prior owner, who had the, the building for the since nightclub, so. I also have a, um, there was a gentleman here, um, last meeting, that had, um, voiced some concerns about the marketing. And I had said that a lot of the residents, especially the new residents, had my cell phone number, um, and I made myself very accessible to them. I want to say that my, my business has decreased, um, over the last eighteen months by thirty to forty percent. And that could be because now I'm going into my third year, and I'm not as popular, and there's other, um, bigger projects in, on Main Street that are happening that people are going to improve them. With that being said, I've noticed though, an in- increase of phone calls from residents locally, um, and my business is down. And I started to study that and tried to really di- diagnose where that's coming from. And, one, I would say the development of Main Street, of the Meatball and some other popular places opening up, which is great. But I, I noticed that since the signs on Railroad Avenue were put up, there's no parking, uh, on the whole length of Railroad Avenue. From the start of Main Street almost, there's some, I think about eight or ten metered spots up to my building, and from my building out to the train station, there's no parking. And what I think that's, what, what, what's happening is, is that those few spots on Railroad Avenue, I'm noticing that are not available anymore. There's more cars that are going into the developments, searching for parking. And I'm starting to see that more calls from people that have never gotten calls for it before, that are inside these communities, are rising, opposing calls from the outside of the communities. And I think people, by default, are in need of parking, whether they're going to Meatball, or a barbecue, or Brick House. Just to peg it as an aquarium problem, I think is a very, um, very easy way out of saying that there's a, a major problem. And by taking all these parking roads away from people, and I think it's causing people to search harder for parking, which is putting people inside these communities, searching for parking by default. I had an independent company come in that I hired and did a study of all the municipal lots, and all the times that the lots were full. Every single lot, including, um, the Suffolk County Sixteenth Court, that is not a village parking lot, was out eighty percent to ninety percent before I was even open. I opened my doors at nine-thirty, and this study showed that there was almost zero parking for my customers. So, I think that, that there is a problem here, and I, um, I just don't feel like there's, I, I don't have an answer for, for these people that are, are looking at me, uh, and saying that, you know, we have parking concerns with your customers, and I, I feel like these lots that we have in there are, are completely full before I, um, I'm leaving.
So, once you did that?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, we just said, I think there is a parking cloud, Railroad and Gerard, except it's by permit. I think the residents that live on that, um, River Lloyd, yeah, live in Gerard, you need the permit still, but. And I think I mentioned this last time, there was a resident of Copper Beach Village, um, I do know there was, I think, security provided by, by Mr. Larito's company, um, for a period of time, and the village also had public safety, um, in the entrances, uh, yeah, of the Copper Beach Village, and these guys, you would pull in at night, what's your name, what's your address, so. That, that issue is arising again, probably shouldn't.
I want just to say that as a business owner, I can't afford to police all these new apartment buildings that they're building at Railroad's, was it Copper Beach? Copper Beach was a, an isolated incident that, that when we first opened, that I could control as a business owner, because it was really only one significant way in and out, that it was easier, easier to run. But now, since the development of, of all these other apartments, I can't outfit an, an army of security guards and cars to police these areas. And I'm finding, and listening to the security company, is, this is just my important customers. I mean, there's a wide range of, of Main Street customers, including the theater, that have trickled down, and will trickle down by default, because in search of parking, that's what people do. They turn down this lot, they'll check this lot, and it trickles down. Especially when the theater has an event, it has, you know, significantly filled out, uh, the western lots, just as quick, because, like I said, by default, just people are moving.
Any, any other member have any comments, questions? Any one in the public have any questions concerning comments? Let's see, none?
What do you want to talk about? Tell them the first, uh, tell them the first of January. It's our, it's our first meeting in January.
The fourth, the second week, sir? I'll, I'll wait the first week in January.
The second, what's on the, uh?
Twenty-first. Twenty-first, that are.
Twenty-first?
That's not, that's not right. I mean, I, I just, I'll do the seventh. I think this was like my second time here on this matter.
Well, we, we have these issues though, they have been getting complex.
The quality of life from the fifth precinct reports that we just seen from the rest of the village.
And we gotta try to make sure that, uh, there is, uh, the information which the village has in some way is conveyed to us and any other relevant boards, and if there is some, uh, assistance that perhaps, or clarification they want from you guys, um, then they'll reach out to you. We can leave it the seventh if, if you, uh, can't make it, then you want it.
No, I can make it, I think the seventh is okay. So, in fact, that would be the Tuesday after.
Wednesday?
Wednesday. First Wednesday of January.
First Wednesday of January?
Yeah.
Yeah.
First is the Thursday, so.
We'll make it work. Tim wants to get this over with, but.
We would like to get it resolved.
We might, it might be, yeah, the first of the year is gonna be rough if we have to get information in the, in the last minutes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to, on our end, get as much information as, as we can.
But just so, just so I'm clear, the board's main concern would be, would be security now. I don't see any, uh, there's no public, uh, here talking about the, the noise, I, I think we put that, I should have that, but if we can present that written security plan, maybe, I don't know if we can get, I mean, obviously, the police, police department.
I think what would help, Matt, is to see, on the village part, to know what you guys are doing.
Right.
I think it would be in your interest to do that to them. Okay? And then if they have any questions, meaning by that, could be code enforcement, or, you know, any other boards or agencies?
We'll get a meeting in the interim, if that's okay, and, uh, we'll get, we'll, we'll sit down and we'll, we'll, if there isn't a clear plan, we'll flesh one out and then submit.
I think that would be good, I think it would be.
We just do it so often, it's, it's kind of complex, but we'll do one specifically for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn this till the seventh of January.
Do I have a second, or is it worth it?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Take care, have a great night, guys. Thank you, Mr. Donald Fell. Board, I'll take a motion to go to recess, please. Motion to go to recess, by Mr. DeSau, seconded by Mr. Burton, all in favor? Aye. The board's in recess.